Like that, I just happened to read that fun fact. At any rate.
You're welcome.
First item on the agenda is small O'Malley subdivision. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So the applicants are not here tonight. At the last meeting, remember, we had done a site walk and I met with the applicant's engineer. They noted that there were additional wetlands that were not, that were unsurveyed, so they've now surveyed them. We don't have any new application yet, so that's why no one's here right now. Also Cynthia sent around an email today that was a copy of one that was sent to the Department of Transit, Department of Public Works, talking about the relocation of the utility bowl, so I think they're probably waiting on that as well. Any comments from the consultants?
No.
Anything from the board?
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make it a motion to adjourn this to August 6th.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Cranston photovoltaic panels. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's nice when you have your vice chairs trained so well. At any rate, so in this application, we're finally at the end. But did we wait four months to have some bushes shown for screening? And also, they did relocate, as you saw, some of the, of the actual array closer into the built wall and tucked it in a little bit more neatly. Any comments from consultants? Any questions or comments from the board?
Happy to see you go through.
Agreed. And would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I believe this introduced, this resolution will be introduced by Vice Chair Dexter.
It is. Resolution granting site plan approval to, for the Cranston ground-mounted solar system, June 15th, 2022, resolution number 2021-51A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval to the project as depicted on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrows. Two, revision of the site plan set to include the revision date of 6/6/2022 on each sheet of the site plan set.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously as well. And now we have the big kahuna for tonight. This is the board's second opportunity to hear about this project. This will be, this is a hotel and villas to be located on the CIA campus property. It's basically just south, about halfway down the hill, and very close to the river is the location. Tonight we have Mr. Zerrin representing the applicants, as well as a host of other individuals. You can all come up if you'd like, but there's only one microphone, sorry. Sure.
Just pull it. You're good.
Thank you. What's up?
Chris.
Mr. Zerrin, I will add that the stone walls in front of the new Saki brewery are looking gorgeous.
It does. It is.
The whole place is looking good. I can't wait to see it opened.
Good. Good, 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 good.
Everything looks great.
That's, that really makes.
Please tell, please tell your clients.
In this business, you do a lot of projects, and then you finally see something get built, and it looks like you represented it. It's a, it's a good feeling. It's a good feeling.
The three on this side are familiar with that because, and I've served 17 years, or in our 18th year, and Chris is in his 10th, I believe now. So we've had the opportunity to see the built environment grow that we've approved, and I tell you, it's, it's so nice, and it makes it for me, it's sort of pleasant, because when I see new projects, I can start seeing them in my head, where they're going to go and how they're going to look in 3D. So, ready to go?
Okay.
We turn it over to you.
We are. Well, good to be back in front of this board. It's a, it's a great board, so it's, and this is a great project. So we put the two together, and it's, you know, it's fun. So hotel and villas at the CIA, and again, I just wanted to thank you for placing us on the agenda. I know, you know, we will have the signatures from, there is a bureaucracy that goes on before the next meeting.
When I heard that the Board of Trustees had to weigh in on whether someone could sign, that's called bureaucracy, I think. But that's okay.
Yes, yes, yes. We put a lot of effort into getting you everything we thought you needed, all the technical work, and when we weren't able to deliver on the signatures, that was.
It's okay.
So, thank you.
I think we trust that you're going to get it.
Appreciate it. So here tonight with our team, a couple of people missing, but before Lou Dorso, the, from NRI, been the project manager and chief construction officer. Michael Gotti from Gensler, the architects who played a, as you've met Michael before, has played a very enhanced role, because design has been such an important aspect of the, of the approval process and the site plan. So they've really, you'll be hearing from them tonight. Michael Barnicle, also, substitute for Rick Perici, who was not well, but again, we've put a lot of time into landscaping, which is integral, and we wanted them here tonight also. Chris Lepine from Labella, we just got him last second, right off the street. So, so we thought we, why not? Take a shot, see how he does.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Samantha Urban, one of the members of his office, who's been tremendous throughout putting these documents together. Tom Johnson, the transportation engineer. Hartgen Archaeological is not here tonight. They'll be available, they're Syracuse, so, you know, they couldn't make it on short notice. You know, we weren't positive we were going to get on. Delta Engineering, who did the wildlife studies, habitat and the wetlands, also not here tonight. But anything we, we're familiar with the work they did, and anything we can't answer, we'll obviously get back, get back to you on. And then THA, who did some of the shared parking analysis, who's a, you know, in conjunction, or we also have Tom Johnson, and we've done our own, but THA does have experience with these types of hospitality, on-the-ground, real-life numbers. So, well, they were not here tonight, but again, we will make them available as necessary. Three way, three quick, three people present tonight. We wanted to give you a really overview and summation of a ton of materials we threw on your, on your lap. Please interrupt us, questions, answers, comments, that's what we're here for. You know, whatever, every information you want, we will endeavor to get you. But Gensler will start off with, as you've, some of you have seen it, but now it's been further developed, the enhanced architectural deck, which includes a broad overview, site plan renderings, material boards, the whole, the whole gamut. Labella, we'll be getting into much more of the details on the site plan, the engineering, existing conditions, site constrained zoning, details on the site plan engineering and the like. And Tom Johnson from their office, touch on very briefly the parking, I mean, the traffic, mostly. Also, there'll be, during Gensler, we'll be talking about landscaping. They'll present on the landscaping and, and available for any questions. Couple of quick points that I think are noteworthy. Realize we're, we're going through a balancing on this site, you know, it's a, it's a constrained site between the archaeological, the wetlands, the conservancy, the conservancy, conservation easements on, on both sides and alike. So we've, you know, we've, we've worked with that, with balancing, you know, avoiding, obviously, and trying to maximize the open space and avoid any of these environmental sensitive areas, and probably most important, preserve the sort of natural feel for the site. I mean, the forest, the woods and alike. That, that is the brand, if you might, and, you know, you get that from Gensler, and they put it in much prettier, flowery words than I can ever do, but that is the brand of the project, per se. The ground lease, as you saw, we're still same arrangement. I know there was some discussion where we were looking at subdivision, and it just got crazy. So it's still a ground lease, but now we have two areas, ground lease, total about 21 acres. We have the, the hotel area and some of the villas in that area, and then you'll see we have the, what we call the for-sale units, but again, they're all going to be ground leased, they're all going to be leased, subleases with the CIA and NRI and the like, and, you know, these are, these are going to be, the, the ground leases for the villas will probably be 99-year plus automatic renewals in perpetuity. So, you know, they're in there.
That's how they work in New York City. All the condominiums you see that are on ground leases, they are 99 years and they roll over.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the hotel, something similar. The ground, the, the villas, the for-sale villas will be all in the membership programs, so we'll have the rentals, you know, for the times that they're not using it. And we're also writing into their, into their leases, mandatory collaboration with the CIA, cooking classes, taking classes, parties, you know, that those, the sale of those or the, the use of those are supposed to be the synergy with the CIA. I mean, that's the whole idea of them, the people who want to be around food, and that we're building that right into the leases. So there will be that, that arrangement. The balancing, as I mentioned before, I think gets reflected probably most in the garage location, the northern garage, where there wasn't a lot of area for a garage. So that's where our primary variances are, are going to emerge. We're going to have variances with the setback, with the FDR. We've met with the FDR twice. They are familiar with it, they seem comfortable with it. We did the balloon tests, the visuals, as you saw on your thing, you cannot see it. And, and we realize we're still going to need a variance on that. The other one, there was a reference made to the, you know, the bulk regulations 4.4, that the volume of this will be less than 60,000 cubic feet and less than 35 feet in height. So that won't trigger or invoke that provision of a neighboring historical, neighboring historical site. The, the, the work around the setbacks on the stream corridor, you know, the 100-foot stream corridors, both, you've got the Marichi Kill and you've got the northern, northern one. That's, that work, just, just to give you a sense of the overall disturbance of that, we probably disturbed about 19% of the corridor. 15% of that'll be temporary, just for grading, so, you know, there'll be no permanent structures of it. And then we do have, we do have about a quarter of an acre or about 20,000 square feet that go, that, that encroaches into the setback, about 36 feet into the setback, 36 and 24. So it's interesting, it's not governed by the DEC, because the DEC's buffer is 50 feet, and the town's corridor is 100 feet. So because of the way the zoning is, is written, we'll probably need to get a variance on those. But per your code, there'll be no, we will demonstrate there'll be no sediment loading of any kind into those waters. There won't be any encroachment in those waters. And we hired, as you saw, Delta to go out and do wildlife habitat studies, because that was the issue, would any of the permanent structures interfere with the open connectivity for habitat between, on the site and the open site. So we've done that, as well as they're coming back on the site, Delta, and going to do another investigation and upgrade their studies some too, on that issue. So we, obviously, we, we take that pretty seriously. So I just wanted to just touch on those. It's, we've spent a lot of time thinking about it, analyzing it, trying to get our consultants in the EAF and the environmental studies to address it. So I'll turn it over to, at this point, Lou Dorso, and just, you know, our fearless leader.
Hi, my name's Lou Dorso. I represent NRI, the developer. I want to echo Michael's comment about thanking you for putting us on this meeting. I know it was irregular, and I, we really appreciate that.
It's not as irregular as you think, I promise.
Further wanted to expand on, you know, this project that's made us very excited. We first heard about this project about three, three years ago from the CIA, and many of you have known about this, so we've come in here and talked to you. We thought this project was very good for our team. It represented what we do very well. We're a hospitality and development company, and this is, project is a, based on hospitality. So we feel that this fits squarely into our wheelhouse, I want to say. We've assembled a first-class team of professionals to put together a set of plans that represent what we feel is going to be a, a great project. We gave them a couple charges for this project, and as Michael said, one of those was to be highly sensitive to the environment that we're putting it in. We were very careful on the geography and the scenic Hudson. It's very important to us and our clientele that we are trying to attract, that we make this as beautiful and, I want to say, natural as possible. So with that said, I'd like to turn this over to Michael Gotti with Gensler, and he'll begin the presentation. I don't want to steal his thunder.
Thank you, Mr. Dorso.
All right, I'll, I'll talk loud. Do I need a mic? You guys can hear me okay?
No, you need a mic. Televised.
Is that, oh, for the television? Oh, okay. Ooh, she's good. Well, it's, it's great to be back here with you guys. You know, last time, I think we had the masks on, nice to see everybody's face. Excited to be back here to show you the advancement of the design that we've taken it over the last number of months. You know, the feedback we received from you guys was, was very, very valuable, and we've incorporated that into this set, and I, I think you're going to be happy with the direction. I hope that's the case, and if you're not, you let us know, and we'll make sure you, you are happy. And, oh, it did work. Good. So what we're going to show you is a series of site plans and existing conditions and, and new and old. Then we're going to show you a few sections through the, through the site, and then a couple of wonderful renderings, and then some color materials. We're going to talk about the parking and, and a couple of the specific elements of the site. So you're all very familiar with the site. Here's just a couple of pictures showing you from the two angles, aerial photographs, and amazing, amazing piece of property that we all got very excited about when we started walking, walking the site many, many years ago now, two years ago. So this is something, we understood that the CIA has a responsibility to update their, their master plan on a regular basis. We called, called attention to that, and we found this, that the latest plan that you see at the top was done about 10 years ago, when they were considering another hotel project. And you, but you'll notice, I think, most, most obviously is a, is a sea of parking that surrounds the old, the hotel that was designed there. And we alluded to it a moment ago, the parking garage, you know, when you think, when you think about that, the first thing might be like, oh my gosh, really? A parking garage on the edge of the Hudson River? I think you're going to see the way we've designed the parking garage, we've, we've tried to work with the existing terrain, we're burying half of it. The, the stone base is a consistent architectural feature throughout all the structures here, and I think you're going to be happy with the, the structure we're proposing. I'll show you that in a, in a couple of minutes. So at the top, this was the campus plan 10 years ago. We had to take satellite images, so we, what we've done is updated the master site plan of the CIA in the lower left, and then you'll see our new development there on the right. And we wanted to graphically represent it, similar to what Lou was saying, that it's really becoming part of the, the natural terrain there, and it's not, we're not raising the, the trees and, and building something. We're trying to fit these in to the existing, the existing natural topographies. So here, just a couple of quick notes, we have the main entrance to the CIA, you see all the way on the left, on the south side of the site. Earlier, there was talk about a secondary entrance in the middle, which we've eliminated with discussions with you guys, and we agree, the best entrance is at the northern point at St. Andrews Road, and we're going to show you what we did there to make that, and to make that work. So, oop, I went backwards. All right, now I'm in trouble. It's going the other way. Oh, there we go, okay. Oh, I got to go back now. Hold on. I don't know how to do it like that. No. Okay. All right, so in a little bit, you're going to see in Labella's presentation, and in our next slide, you're going to see some more detail about the challenges of the site. We were just talking about that a little bit. I mean, the list that Michael just talked about, we had the, the protected areas of the wetlands, the property line setbacks, the easements, pre-contact sites. Our buildable area was limited, so we were as creative as we could be, and you're going to see, we've carved the, the villa layouts around those protected areas. We do very, very little, we're requesting very, very little variance here as it relates to buildable area. We think this plan best illustrates, you know, that, that we wanted to consider the integration into the existing topography, avoidance of any archaeological and environmentally sensitive areas, and really do what we could to restore when we do have to clear things out, to restore them back. So I was going to invite Michael Barnicle up to talk a little bit about the next plan, which is our kind of advanced site plan here. Again, important to, to develop a site that works in concert with the natural terrain, and we're going to talk a little bit about the trail system and, and connecting to that.
So can we stand?
Yes. Okay. So, again, we want to thank you for having us here. As you can imagine, as a landscape architect, very excited about the project. The ability to actually try to tuck some of this stuff in and preserve the environment makes, you know, makes us very happy, right? As you see, some of these buildings, we, if you look into the detail, we really tried to tuck them into the hills, so there was no visual from the highway, right? And getting those elevations, all those finished floors, we worked with Labella's team, they're all different. We didn't just say they're all at 100, they're all different because of the terrain changes throughout, right? And that as we worked down through those wetlands, we, we did the same. Some things on the back you'll see are raised up on tilt, stilts, and some are low, I had to tuck into those low lying areas. The plan really emphasizes, you'll see, the wetlands that we preserved and the amount of trees we actually preserved. So the limit of disturbance is that light green, where the grading is cutting back into that, to make those roads work in proper elevations, as well as the sidewalk. We're going back in with native trees to then replant all of that area, to reestablish that growth. And then the pathway, I will tell you, is, is somewhat diagrammatic. We spent about three-quarters of a day walking it with GPS to, to lay out what we thought was the great walkway, but then we have to remap that. So we'll have to do that out, again, in person, to make sure that we don't affect any major trees or environmental issues. I think that's pretty much it.
I do want to add one thing with regards to the pathways.
You need to take the mic.
The challenging design of the pathways that you, I certainly think everybody can appreciate is you cannot disturb any of the ground within the conservation easement. So we have to lay this out in such a manner where we take into account rock outcrops, wetlands and topography, so that we have an actual pedestrian-friendly surface. So when you're looking at this gentleman saying, you spent six or seven hours trying to find a path, there are some nuances involved in, in the development of that.
Okay, so the next, the next sheet, you can review at your leisure, it's, it's just a lot of square footages and the size of the buildings and such, kind of boring. So I'll move on to the next one, I hope. Next. Hmm. There it is, okay. So, you know, we've all been kind of talking about this. Did it go for, oh, oh, that's the word. Don't look, don't look. Don't look. Oh, I blew it.
You know, well, there's a, there's a, well, there's a lull in the action. I'm, I'm going to get hell for this. I forgot to introduce my colleague, Marcia Goldstein, one of the lawyers who you will hear from at times, and meet and see, and this is her first introduction, and I'll deserve it, and I'll probably be used to it, because I get it a lot. So I just wanted to make sure, Marcia.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, so as, as all of us have been saying, you know, when we first had the opportunity to walk this site, I, we were overwhelmed with some of the amazing opportunities that the natural terrain affords us here. You know, the first drawing shows a, a section running north-south through the hotel structure and showing a drop-off to the Marichi Kill that you see on the, on the left-hand side of that upper section. You know, again, it, it, our, our hotel will have, be an as-of-right height of 60 feet above the, the average grade in that area, but the, the views looking south there are pretty spectacular. And as you look to the west, you see the Hudson River, it's, it's pretty second to none. The second drawing is an east-west section, calling attention to the natural berm that Michael alluded to, that you can see, all the way on the left-hand side is Route 9, you can see that the natural berm that's there will, will avoid any, any views of the villas that are going to be behind that berm. So it worked out quite beautifully for us. And then you see it work, it's all the way, all the way down to where the hotel is, and then the drop-off to the Hudson, to the Hudson River. Lastly, there at the bottom, the section, you see at the bottom, a simple section through the parking garage, which, you know, Michael had mentioned in his intro, we're going to discuss further in a couple of slides. It's partially below grade to, to bury it in the landscape as you approach the, the main entrance to the building, and really is, is kind of going to be hidden, hidden below, below the natural terrain. So I'm going to jump to some of the fun stuff, excited to show you the advancement of the design of the hotel and the villas today, albeit, we want you to keep in mind, it's still a work in progress, and we're going to continue to develop in the coming, in the coming months. But our plan architecturally is to be respectful of the local architecture, most notably, most notably in materiality. A slightly modern interpretation of different types of volumes that are seen throughout the Hudson Valley is one of the things we want to, we want to work, work towards. But the strength of the design, I alluded to it before, is that consistent natural stone base that evokes the stone walls that you see throughout properties in the Hudson Valley, and local natural materials are going to be used throughout. So the upper image there is our port cochere. As you make your way into the site, you're going to loop around and drop off right there at the front of the, of the hotel structure. We haven't worked through the interior yet, but it's going to be a beautiful, very high space on the ground level, looking all the way through to a courtyard beyond in the back, where it's going to be all very, very natural terrain there, and looking beyond that to the Hudson River. At the bottom, you see an aerial shot, and I'm going to get into this a little bit. You see a, a green roof there, a partial green roof on the, on the left volume, there's photovoltaics in the middle, and then there's, there's a couple other interesting things going on on the right-hand side. We want you to all know, the owners are dedicated to a lead silver minimum certification on this project.
Silver lead.
Silver lead as a minimum. So we're, all our designs are working toward that, and Gensler kind of works toward that on all of our projects, anyway. So the last section and the last rendering for the hotel, oh, it's, excuse me. I don't know why it does that. All right. So, you know, really important part of this, and we heard from you that there's a lack of large event venues in this area. So we do have a, a plan for an event venue, you see on the south part of our, of our building, and that's a, a really interesting view as you make your way around the site. And you see there on the right, there's a natural rock outcropping that when we were walking, we said, man, this is really, really terrific. We want it, we were going to take advantage of that, we're going to work with that. Our patio, our outdoor space is going to be on top of that, and it's really going to feel like we found this foundation and we built the, the hotel on it, which is exactly what we're doing. In the next, next slide, I alluded to it before, these are the different sections of the roofing system. What you see on the, on the left, or A, is, is a vegetative root roof, which is reducing the building's footprint, resulting in some water retention opportunities for us. There's a second, smaller vegetable garden, if you will, that's going to be actually a farm-to-table opportunity, because there's a, a restaurant adjacent to it there, so it'll be a, an interesting way to, to make that, make that work. And then we have the photovoltaics you see in section B. And then in C, the, the image you see in the bottom right, just talks about rainwater harvesting and storage for use in irrigation, also offsetting the requirements we have for some rainwater retention. So get into the garage a little bit, as I talked about before. So, get into the garage a little bit, as I talked about before. You know, our goal here was obviously not to build the big concrete garage. We're trying to come up with a design that works, again, with the natural materials. I don't think the view two there does it justice. We're going to have a lot of, a lot of planting in front of this thing. We really want to screen, we really want to screen this. But what we're most excited about is we've, we've done this before. Heavy timber construction allows us to meet a lot of the lead requirements for sustainability. And there's some beautiful, beautiful parking structures that are made from heavy timber. So, that's our goal, to start the design using, using that and get very creative on how we frame this out. It's a smaller garage, so our spans are not as great as what you would see in a big city. And we have two floors of covered parking in a mass timber structure, as I said, and there's going to be a rooftop tennis facility. Oh, actually, just quickly, the materiality here is kind of consistent through the whole project. Natural stone, as I mentioned before, wood cladding, and we're going to do a lot of ivy and growth. We have fencing there, obviously, to control the sport, and then just some metal, metal panel details that'll be pretty consistent. In the next one, you see the plans that I was just starting to talk about. We have three tennis courts. We have a pro shop we're planning on that, on that roof level, and a small locker room area for there. And we are going to have a snack bar up there, and then some covered patio for the tennis facility. And you see, this is a work in progress, but you can see the topography here as it works its way down, that a part of this building will be, will be underground, and then, and then expand out this way with the heavy timber structure. Next, okay. So, very, very excited to show the advance here of the, of the villas. Here's where I think we can get really, really creative. We didn't want the villas to be ostentatious or gaudy. It is, you know, for the design intent to work, it really has to work with the rest of the development, and they're meant to blend seamlessly into the natural environment, as we've been talking about, and feel like they belong here in the Hudson Valley. You know, we took our cue from the Dutch farmhouses. We wanted to feature kind of the distinctive pitched roofs with gable ends and prominent roof beams and open fireplaces. We have two villas shown here. The main area at the bottom will be a duplex model that maybe the right and left-hand side might actually have a different platform, as Michael had mentioned, with a party wall in between that we're going to use as, as an opportunity for a fireplace, indoor and outdoor fireplace. So, hasn't been completely worked out, but in our minds, it's, it's a pretty spectacular set of plans for these, for these units getting there. I've got a couple more. So, there's a couple more structures on the site. You guys were very clear that we're all sick of seeing the Coco's Restaurant. So, we are going to, we are going to use that. It actually works to our advantage in a lot of ways. We're looking at it probably three years, two, three years of construction with design and such. So, we're going to utilize this, this building as not only a construction office, but a marketing center for, for the sale of these units and for the, you know, marketing of the, of the hotel itself. So, what we did here is just take a very simple cladding, wood cladding, re-clad the entire building, replace some of the windows, create a gateway entrance, if you will. There's going to be a separate entrance for the construction, for the construction office and the marketing center, as you can imagine. So, again, it works beautifully for us. It's right at the entranceway, and we're going to clean it up with some landscaping, allow some parking in the front and any kind of storage or staging in the back. You see a clubhouse here in the lower left-hand corner. That was something we added, and you can kind of see it in yellow in the plan. It's an amenity for the for-sale villas. It's going to, there's going to be a pool, there's going to be a game room and a, like a snack, snack area there. And then you see, we added the signage, which we plan on having there at the entranceway. That's all right out of your code book, and we're going to follow, follow the rules on that. And then the last one is a materials palette that is going to be consistent, again, for the whole site. And you'll see, there's not a lot, not a lot here. We don't think we need a lot here. We think, we think that natural, local stone base, consistency in that is an important part of tying the architecture together on this overall site. Reclaim wood siding, some, some other wood siding, maybe a mix and match depending on the, on the structures. Standing seam metal roofing and black metals, metals, really just taking advantage of what the Hudson Valley has to offer and not kind of straying from that. And glass you hear, you see here, maybe some blue stone pavers. None of this, again, is cast in stone, but this is our image at this time. And like I said, ivy and foliage, I think is going to be a, an important part as this matures as a development overall. So, that is the architectural presentation. I can.
I'm going to try it for you, Chris. We're going to have Chris go through the civil engineering drawing in a little bit more detail. If you can bring up the existing conditions plan.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here this evening. On behalf of LaBella, we're extremely thrilled to be a part of this project and looking forward to collaborating not only with our team, but with everybody else here at the town in developing a product here that we can all be proud of. We're going to split our presentation for LaBella up into three sections. I'm going to give an overview of the existing conditions as Delta's not here this evening. I'm also going to give a little bit of a background on the bulk requirements and the site layout. I'm then going to turn it over to my colleagues Samantha Urban, who will give an overview of the grading and utilities for the project, and Tom Johnson, who will provide an overview of the traffic as well as the parking, and also the improvements that are going to take place along the Route 9 corridor and where we are in discussions with the DOT as well. So, I think, you know, from the existing condition standpoint, one of the things I want to share here is this project's made up of three parcels. And as Mike alluded to earlier, there really is a very limited area within these parcels to develop. The total acreage of the parcels are 73 acres. It consists of part of the main parcel from the CIA. There's a 105-acre site for which our project will encompass 52 acres of that property. There's also the 20-acre site adjacent to Coco's, and then the .92-acre Coco site. Of that, we are going to be disturbing approximately 31 acres. So, within that, so it gives you an idea of roughly maybe 40% of the site is actually developable out of the 73 acres. We spoke of the conservation easement, and that conservation easement consists of 8.8 acres of the overall site. Delta engineers, architects, and surveyors was retained to do the wetland delineation on the property, as well as the ETR studies and the stream corridor studies. Overall, on the property, they delineated approximately nine wetlands and seven streams. They considered five of the smaller wetlands to be potentially excluded from the Army Corps designation as a wetland, as indicated that they are isolated. Four of the onsite wetlands, they believe to be regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers. This is subject, obviously, as we all know, to a jurisdictional determination and walk. They're currently in consultation with them as it relates to that. With regards to their ETR review and a review of the DEC mapper for the site, there's a concern for Atlantic sturgeon and short-nosed sturgeon. The good thing is that this project's on land and not in water, so I think we can all agree that we're not going to be concerned about impacting those. However, both U.S. Fish and Wildlife and DEC have identified the Indiana bat on this site as both a threatened and endangered species, both at the state and federal level. The, also indicated from the IPAC is the monarch butterfly. It's not necessarily, it's a candidate species, it's not listed, but we did do our due diligence and take a look at it on the site, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on that. So, Delta did visit the site as it related to the Indiana bats, and they did not document any maternity, maternity roost on the site. They are in agreement that the site has the potential for habitat. They've made the recommendation for clearing between the months of October 15th and March 15th. There is a, no evidence of any milkweed clusters throughout the site, which in their opinion rules out the candidate species of the monarch butterfly. So, that's not something that we are concerned about. The environmental resource map, we're also identified two significant natural communities in the vicinity of the project site, one being a freshwater tidal marsh in the Hemlock Northern Hardwood Forest. In both cases, they're located outside of the project area. Once again, we are on land and not in water with this project. And the actual Hemlock Northern Hardwood Forest is located east of Route 9, north of this site, but we thought it was important to note as part of our studies. Michael touched upon this earlier with the corridor wildlife study that Delta conducted. They conducted it along the two mainstream corridors, the Marichikil and the unnamed tributary to the north. The Towne High Park defines their stream corridor as the bed of the stream and the land within 100 feet of the mean high water table on either side of the stream. That is where Delta, to date, has focused their desktop review. My understanding is they also conducted a earlier walkthrough of the property. However, during that time in April, it's difficult to determine the impact to a number of candidate species. As Michael shared with you, they're looking to come out in the latter part of June to validate their findings of their desktop study.
Chris, can you talk into your microphone a little more?
Oh, okay. Can you not hear me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. This is my first time I was picked up on the way here, if you recall.
If you think we should trade. We're totally committed.
Yeah.
It is good.
I did introduce my team members, though.
Good one.
Dagger.
And the bus runs over.
Thanks for the compliment. To, to kind of elaborate on what Michael shared with you earlier in terms of the impact, and a majority of this is associated with the event structure and parking structure, we anticipate that there's about a two-acre disturbance within that stream corridor, and a majority of that is associated with the event structure. However, on the, on the bright side, the initial due diligence study, they've determined that they don't believe that mammals or birds are going to be impacted, and that there's other habitat within this corridor and routes that can be utilized for the species of concerned. Obviously, the other impacts of species here would be fish as well, but once again, we're not going to be within the waters, so we are not anticipating impacting those species. So, kind of, if we can go to the site plan now, Mike? Next one? Yeah, that's a great one. So, you know, one of the things I think we forgot to tell you, everybody, in the beginning of this, is the project's located within the St. Andrews District. And the proposed primary access to the property is coming off of Route 9 across St. Andrews Road, and that's in the Town Center Historical District. The only work within that district is for that access drive as it comes through the proposed property. It's the, the lodging facility is a permitted use in the St. Andrews District, as well as the proposed event space villas and associated amenities are also considered.
Oh, just, just letting you know, there was a zoning change, and it's not Town Cor, it's Town Center Historic anymore, I don't think.
Oh.
But we can.
It should be corridor business, I believe.
Corridor.
But that's okay. We know what you're talking about.
I think the access drive's still going to go through it.
Yes.
It will.
For the record.
For the record. So, as we indicated, access to the site, the main access is going to be across from St. Andrews. We, and Tom will dive into a little bit more detail as to the ingress and egress there and the improvements associated at that location. We will still utilize the central access point between the existing CIA access in our site, and that is for emergency access as well. That'll allow for ladder trucks, a direct route right into our site. We've also designed the main access road coming into our site for fire access as well for a 26-foot, or ladder truck, I'm sorry. That main access road and the through road from the center and surrounding around the resort itself will accommodate a ladder truck. We have accommodated a regular fire truck for the access drives along the for-sale villas. With regards to the access drive as we come in, we will be crossing over a wetland. The intent here is, it's not a significant flow there. We're actually in the upstream aspects of that wetland. However, the project as proposed is calling out for three 28-foot wide culverts in order to minimize the disturbance to the wetland. We've been able to, with the addition of those culverts, we've been able to keep the disturbance to less than a tenth of an acre. It's actually at .07 acres. We're also, as Michael alluded to earlier, with regards to the stream corridor impacts, we may require an Article 15 permit from the DEC as it relates to the pedestrian and golf cart crossing of the Marichikil Creek, and that's mainly associated with the grading for the pedestrian walkway thereafter and the installation of piers within the 50-foot setback line. As I said earlier, the overall disturbance for the site is going to be approximately 31 acres. Based on some initial dialogues with the pre-construction manager, in order for construction to proceed in an efficient manner, and based on the cuts and fills associated with this site, we're going to be applying for a waiver to disturb more than five acres as part of this. We know, obviously, with the sensitivity of the surrounding areas, the Hudson, the Marichikil, the conservation easements, it's, it's got to be a tight plan. We're looking at this initially, we're thinking this is a four-phase type plan for this project. We understand the concern about sediment loading, and we understand the need to identify travel paths to be maintained at all points of time and preserve to the greatest extent the natural area until it needs to be disturbed. So, we'll take that in consideration as we work alongside your consultants in the development of those plans. The last thing I want to share with the board is the, it's our understanding, we've outlined within our EAF all the agencies that we believe to be involved in this. We believe the Town of High Park itself will be involved in the site plan approval, floodplain development permit, stream corridor encroachment, and ZBA variances and a five-acre waiver, and approval of the stormwater pollution prevention plan. We believe that Dutchess County Warner Waste Water Authority will be involved for the approval of the water connection. The onsite water will not be dedicated to them, so their approval will be limited purely to the connection and the meter pit prior to the property line. Dutchess County Department of Health will be required for the onsite water and sewer. We've had initial discussions with them on this project, and they've outlined some of their studies that they're seeking as part of this. We'll need, obviously, a 239 referral to the Dutchess County planning. From the DEC's perspective, we'll need both the Speedy's permit, and it's highly likely we'll need an Article 15 stream disturbance permit, which would trigger the water quality permit, as well as the U.S. Army Corps Wetland Disturbance, which triggered the water quality permit. The DOT, we're going to need approval for the highway work permit. SHPO consultation as it relates to the archaeologically sensitive areas and the pre-contact areas on the site. We're also going to have to work with the Department of State for a coastal zone consistency review, and as I indicated, most likely a nationwide permit 39 for the wetland disturbance for the property. The only other thing I wanted to touch on with regards to the zoning setbacks, Michael indicated earlier, that we will need some variances. Just to kind of give an overview, we have a 150-foot setback from Route 9 to the project site. We have a 100-foot conservation buffer setback for scenic Hudson on the western portion of the property. There's also a 100-foot setback to the historical district on the northern side and a 100-foot stream corridor setback. We believe there's four stream corridor encroachments we'll be making. They'll be making them for the garage or parking event structure, I'm sorry. We're also going to need it for the emergency access drive coming in, the culverts to convey the runoff from the DOT right-of-way along the Marichikil, and also for an access encroachment for a roadway and for the pedestrian bridge. And last but not least, we'll also need a setback variance, not only for the garage, but there is a retaining wall that's also within that 100-foot setback. but there is a retaining wall that's also within that 100-foot setback area. As I recall, any retaining wall over five feet is considered a structure, and therefore will require a variance as well. I'm going to now turn this over to Samantha Urban to share with you the grading and utilities.
Lou, so before I start on the grading, I just want to touch on the visual assessment that we did.
Excuse me. You might want to try that mic instead of having to hold it, and you could speak right up to it.
Can you hear me okay?
No.
Okay. Right here? Okay. So, I just want to touch on the visual assessment that we did, because obviously clearing is needed on this site.
Can you move closer?
I feel like I'm on it.
You have to look, you're swallowing it.
Okay. So, for the visual assessment, we had three locations for balloons to be placed. So, on both sides of the hotel, there are two balloons, one at the roof elevation and then one 40 feet above that as a spotter balloon. And then we also did one at the parking structure close to the property line. This was similar to what we did in 2011. The locations where we took photos were also very similar to what was done in 2011. It was the same locations. And most of those photos, you don't really see the actual balloon for the roof. You more see maybe the spotter. But some of those locations where we did see the roof, we had Gensler put together a visual for you, which is on the next slide. This photo sim shows that the colors and materials that are being used for the proposed project blends in very nicely with the nature, and that the proposed buildings do not go higher than the tree line.
Yeah, I think the burn that we talked about adjacent to Route 9 helps us tremendously as well.
Remember, two of us were here when this was done back in 2011. You can see the buildings from the walkway over the Hudson. And as I said, I think at the last meeting, if we're on the second floor of the FDR home and you lean out of a window and go like this?
Right.
You see a little bit of it. That's it.
Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, I was excited when we put this rendering together, because it does kind of show that it blends nicely.
And if my memory is still accurate, I believe Sina Hudson's viewshed easement requires you to use natural materials as well as colors found in nature. So, in other words, this is required that you have to do this as well.
All right.
And just to note that the garage was not seen for any of the locations. Sorry, can you hear me? The garage was not seen for any of the locations. Go to the next slide. So, although Chris mentioned there was a lot of disturbance, our grading plan does utilize a lot of the existing topography and a lot of the topographic features. It was also earlier mentioned that we are trying to utilize the rock outcrop at the top of the hill for the event structure, and we're also trying to minimize the amount of substantial excavation by designing the villas to match the terrain out there and by being elevated above the existing grade. As you've heard before, we are trying to preserve the existing elements and create a connectivity to the natural environment and maintain a corridor for wildlife. We are also doing this by reducing the amount of additional structures, such as retaining walls onsite. This is being done by integrating the proposed grades with the existing topography at environmentally sensitive areas, specifically around that environmental easement at the center of the site. For majority of the land around that easement, we are seamlessly combining the proposed grades with the existing contours. This is also being done in the west side of the site where the other environmental easement is and along the Marichikil. That being said, there are a few locations where we feel a retaining wall is necessary so that we can reduce the amount of encroachment and disturbance to the site. Some of those locations include the wetland, if you go back to the other plan. If not, don't worry about it. There's a wetland up there that is between the river and the proposed site, which is at an elevation of 58, where the proposed roadway is around 72. So, we're putting a retaining wall there to protect the wetland, and then also some small retaining walls around the parking garage to protect and not disturb the historic sensitive area. On this sheet, you'll see that there is a large retaining wall on the east part of the site behind some of those villas. So, that was added so that we don't have to cut down a bunch of the large trees and, you know, just trying to catch grade up there. This will allow us to have that nice buffer. And I would like to note that at this point, we do not have geotechnical investigations done, but it is the goal of the project to use some of the underlying rock as retaining walls to keep the natural feel and reduce the amount of man-made structures on this site. So, specifically in this area, if we can, but any areas on the site where we can use rock instead of retaining wall would be preferred. And there are numerous, or various green infrastructure practices proposed on this project, such as the green roof that was mentioned. We have a cistern that will be reusing runoff and for irrigation. There's roofed or disconnect. There are nine bio retention areas throughout this site, and there are some moderately sloped swells to promote infiltration. It should be noted that there is no detention for this site as it discharges directly into a fifth order stream. This road was designed so that it all pitches directly to one side of the site into the swell and is then treated. There was some constraint with that wetland on the west side, and then there's a hilltop on the east side, so it's a bit of a pinch point. We do understand that the town had some concern about that 150-foot Route 9 setback, so we added a retaining wall along part of that so that we didn't have to clear all of those trees, and we could maintain and preserve that buffer. Moving on to the, moving on to the next plan, we have the onsite utilities. So, for sanitary, majority of the site will use gravity lines going down to three low points where there'll be pump stations. Two of the pump stations are near the hotel, one in the northwest, northeast corner and one in the southwest corner. Both of those will then flow down to the third pump station, which would be on the south side of the site. I should mention that the two pump stations on this site will have emergency power coming from the hotel in case of an emergency. Next sheet, please. The final pump station is all the way south of the site, south of those villas. It will follow the pedestrian roadway to an existing pump station on the CIA property. That existing pump station currently treats the student townhomes, and this design was previously approved, I believe, back in 2011. And I should also note that the Culinary Institute has upgraded their tenancy agreement for this project. As far as water, we are planning to connect to the 16-inch line that is in Route 9. Those are owned by Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority, as Chris had mentioned, which is subject to their review. But the buildings onsite will be fed by an 8-inch line, which will be reviewed by the Department of Health and the town.
Samantha, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there a district being proposed to, for the water and sewer?
There is no district.
No.
So, there's just going to be a meter pit for DCWWA, and then it goes?
The sewer will tie into the.
The CIA has a, currently has a tenancy agreement with the city and the town of Poughkeepsie, the 4th Ward District. I believe that's for 215,000 gallons a day. We will be tying in, as this will still be lands of the CIA, it's considered as part of that district, or the tenancy agreement that they signed for, and will be tying into their existing pump station.
So, the county won't require, like, transportation corporation to be formed or a district because it's crossing all these parcel lines?
We spoke to the Dutchess County Board of Health, and since all these lands are currently owned by the Culinary Institute, and they currently have seven parcels within their, within their ownership, which comprises it, they're going to continue to allow this to continue as part of their tenancy agreement that they have. We spoke with Jason Teed on this at the Health Department. We asked the same question that you asked, is would a transportation corporation be required? And he indicated no.
Okay, that makes it easier.
And that tenancy agreement has been extended, I believe, by another 50 years, as well as expanded and signed and passed by the town of Poughkeepsie and the, and the city. So, that is finalized and signed, and we, in fact, the project has made the first payment to the.
Oh, good.
I was actually going to ask how much it costs, but that's rude.
A little bit in advance.
Was the Town of High Park provided a copy of it?
You know what? I don't think it was in our materials. We'll include it, for sure.
Just for, you know, the record that that's done, because I was going to mention that they would, as part of the approvals, as part of the approvals, you'd also need the city and town, Town of Poughkeepsie, but if you already have it.
We have, they voted on it, signed it, and we made the, made the first payment. So, we'll, we'll provide them. Sorry, we should have put that in the materials.
That's all right. I mean, we got to bring up, you know, something.
Yeah. If there's no more questions about this, I'll pass it to Tom for traffic and parking.
I'm going to stand up and talk to the monitor here. I'm Tom Johnson from La Bella. I did the traffic impact study for this project, and also I'll talk a little bit about the parking analysis that was done for the project. And since I'm on this figure right here, I'll start with the parking. The parking study was done by THA. They are an expert in parking. Firm, and I just want to hit on some of their findings for the parking needs. They calculated the parking needs for the project, and they did it with and without an event at the barn, so how much parking would be needed onsite. So, I'll start with the calculations for non-event needs. For a weekday, they calculated about 160 spaces would be needed on typical weekday, and on a weekend, roughly 186 spaces. And basically, those, that would occur at nighttime around 10 o'clock at night. So, the parking garage itself has 261 parking spaces, so based on their needs for a non-event happening at, on the project site, they have excess capacity for parking, about 80 spaces. So, there is no need for any more parking spaces for a non-event. However, when you add in an event at a facility, we come up with a parking shortage. They calculate roughly 300, 300 spaces are needed during the weekday and 322 spaces on a weekend for a weekend event. So, on a weekend, we're about 60 spaces short. We have to find 60 other spaces.
So, with that.
There is an agreement with the culinary campus to share the parking lot. This is the commuter and student lot. Here's their main entrance. Here's Route 9, main entrance to the culinary, and the commuter and student parking is right here, and those would be the lots that they are willing to share during an event. So, what La Bella did, we went out there last month in May, eight different time periods. We wanted to find out how many spaces are available in these two lots to see if we could accommodate the 60 spaces. And we went out there on a Thursday, a Friday, Saturday, and a Sunday for all those different eight, eight time periods.
Excuse me, when, what month was that?
May.
After the students? Well, it's year round.
What, they were in session. The summer session has started.
Okay, just checking.
Yes. So, what we found out, among those eight different time periods, that there was 280 to 330 spaces empty, available spaces that could accommodate an event here. So, with this parking lot that's willing to be shared, there's enough parking easily to accommodate the 60 spaces that are needed for an event.
I had to interrupt you just for a moment. Did they look at any of the events that go on at the CIA, such as the county executive speech, state of the county, such as they've done, they've shown plays, musicals in the auditorium, yeah, auditorium? We've had county planning events there. There's lots of events there, in other words. I'm not trying to be rude, but I don't think you can rely on just casually walking over there and seeing how many empty spaces there are at different times when it's just students. Because if you're having a nighttime event and they're having one of their nighttime events, that parking lot is full, I can assure you.
What we did is we tried to figure out when there would be the combined maximum events. So, I'll just say that the times that we went out there was the Thursday morning at 8:00 for to cover a morning event that would be on campus, and we went back out on Thursday at 6:00. So, if there was an evening or if students were coming back to do, if they had evening classes, or even if there was an evening event. We went back out on Friday. We did 8:00 in the morning. We did 12:00 noon, and we did 6:00. So, we got, we got like a Friday weekend event as well. Saturday, we did 12:00 noon, if there was an early event, perhaps a wedding at noon around on Saturday, and we also did a Saturday, 6:00 for an evening event.
Wait, I'm sorry. You're not saying that there were events, just maybe there were events.
No, right.
Right.
So, we.
The events, we would note, I mean, the CIA advertises them often. I get invited to them, so.
Right. What we had to deal with was where we were and getting the parking study done and submitting it, and obviously, we couldn't wait for events to happen. These are just the times we try to go out there and see what was happening. And then Sunday, we did a 2:00 event.
I think it's also important to note during those events that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that they do still have the ability to use the parking garage over at Roth Hall where it's not being utilized by their employees during that course of the day or certain visitors when you're having the county event or a play. And so, that's why they've dedicated only the student parking area for the use of this project and not any other locations on their site that they utilize for other event parking as well.
I just want, we'll hear you. We'll go out and look at the study and come up with a hypothetical event and, and try to overlay that. I think we'll do all right, because I think there was significant sensitivity analysis. I think there was something like 200-plus spaces that were empty, and we only needed 80. Yeah, about 300. So, we'll, we'll go back and include.
I'm just trying to remember.
Well, you have to coordinate.
I'm going to say, this is pre-COVID. It was pre-COVID that we went to these events. I mean, you're still looking at the effects of COVID when you're looking at traffic right now, because not a lot of people go to their restaurants like they used to. Because people are still somewhat nervous about going inside to restaurants themselves.
Also, a quick question. Do you know, given that we're, you know, pre-COVID enrollment to college versus current times and what the student capacity versus enrollment would be, because that might be, you know, something to consider? Thank you.
So, one thing I want to note on what your comment was, Mr. Chairman, is the parking in the student location is not dedicated to restaurants. The reason why we studied that during the restaurant times is because the students are cooking there, so we wanted to get a feel for, the students are occupying that area as well in the evening.
Yeah, I mean, what you're hearing is there's less concern about the students, more concerned about that big hall that they built being occupied at the same time that you're having a special event.
I mean, they'll have to coordinate. I mean, I'm sure there'll be some, like, coordination of, like, events between the two entities. I mean, I, I would think you're going to talk to each other.
You know what? What might be worthwhile investigating is obviously they came before the board here for their planning board approval as part of their parking analysis. Did they identify where they would have their parking associated with those events?
I'm sorry, for the Culinary Institute?
Yes. We could probably look at the approved drawings that indicate.
They didn't give us a list.
Okay.
Can I be candid? It's a mysterious entity over there. They did not give us a list. They didn't ever tell us there were going to be plays shown there at all for profit. People, there was a theater group that had it for three years. None of that was mentioned when we did our analysis whatsoever.
Well, so far, we're doing pretty good. We got a master plan. We got open trails. So, we will, we will, we will work on that.
Everyone wants the culinary in their town. They're a great, they're a great asset for us, but they do tend to be a little mysterious at times. That's all. Yeah, aloof.
So, your overflow parking would probably involve a shuttle service, I assume?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. I should say something about the THA study also, and, you know, they're, they're very good on, if you looked at their, if you looked at their graphs, I think they specialize in real-time usage and parking. That, that's, that was there. But we also, we, meaning La Belle, did the study also. The required is 532 under the code. If you include the 80 overflow, we get to 435. So, with the shared parking, that does it, because when you look at the, when you look at the, what we included as the shared parking and the ratios of the people who are using the different amenities on the site, many. of the people who are using the different amenities on the site, many of them are already on the site. I.e., people are on the site for the hotel and are going to the restaurant, are going to an event, are already on the site in the hotel. So we're closer. And the other thing in that THA study that they did, after we submitted it, we found out, they used a number originally of 1,300. They included a tennis event that comes out to about 800 parking spaces. There's not going to be.
For those three little tennis courts up there?
There aren't going to be any tennis events. The USTA decided not to come to do their event at the top of the garage. We did all right. We got a twofer. Anyplace tennis. So I just wanted to point that out for any confusion because it confused us when we saw.
Okay, ready for traffic to move on or still on parking?
Raise with one more question. Oh, go ahead, Victoria.
I think Chazen actually did this plan. We have notes from when the pavilion went in where they talked about the 800-seat auditorium requiring five seats per space. And so I think you should probably go back and pull the work that was done for that pavilion and see how these work together.
We weren't retained for the burning project.
Okay.
But we can pull the plans from the culinary.
So, Mr. Zaren, are you saying that the, you said people, going to the event barn would already be on the hotel? Are you restricting events to only something that hotel individuals, hotel guests can attend? Or is this something that's for rent for anybody to have a big wedding, a party, a garlic festival, whatever?
Yes, it could be for, for non, people not staying.
And that's reflected in the traffic analysis, yes?
And also the parking analysis as well.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, parking? I mean, traffic?
Yes.
Can we try the next slide? Okay. Traffic study. We completed that last month in May. We analyzed four intersections on Route 9 as part of a traffic study, starting down with West Dorsey, the signalized intersection, CIA, St. Andrews, and we also went up to the Hyde Park Mall. Back in February, before we got into the detailed analysis for the study, we met with the DOT. We did some preliminary analysis to try and get their feeling on what we thought was going to be needed for the intersection with St. Andrews where the site comes in. We presented a hand sketch of an improvement and also our trip generation numbers. They accepted our trip generation numbers. And then we just did a nicer sketch of what we thought is going to be needed at the intersection. So I'll just quickly run through the intersection. So Route 9, north that way, here's where the site driveway comes in. We envisioned the site driveway to be a two-lane approach, a left-turn lane, and then a through right-turn lane, and then one lane going in. St. Andrews Road, no change physically to the layout. However, with the two left-turn lanes, the inside left-turn lane, we envision would be where the through movement is going to be going into the site. So we're maintaining the separate right-turn lane. We feel that's a very heavy movement that needs to stay as an exclusive right-turn lane. Northbound and southbound Route 9, because we introduced a fourth leg to the intersection, it inherently increases the delay at the intersection where typically we're going to have to do something now to the main line to reduce the delays. And here, we're recommending two through lanes in each direction, northbound and southbound. Northbound, you wouldn't have to widen the approach to the intersection. We were going to take the right-turn lane and turn it into a through lane with a right-turn lane. So there's no longer an exclusive right-turn lane. However, with that though, we do have to widen this side of Route 9 to accept the through lane coming through and then carry it for about 400 feet and then start widening.
I have to say something real quickly. Number one, did you not, did the DOT not tell you what the Bellfield project has to do with the same intersection?
The only improvement Bellfield had to do was.
A dedicated right-turn lane with a.
Was to do a pork chop through there. So if we get rid of that right-turn lane, then there's no need for the pork chop anymore. Because now there's not going to be that heavy through, consistent turn. They're going to have to stop now.
Well.
The plans that we approved for Bellfield do not show what you're proposing.
Right.
And DOT back then rejected that whole two lanes going north and then narrowing down. They're now accepting it?
No, not yet. That's under review.
Okay, sorry.
So I'm just, this is where we are right now in the process.
Well, no, it's just, this intersection has been the center of lots of site plans and.
Yes.
And I'm not the biggest fan of DOT. There, I said it. Mr. Zaren's heard me curse at them before. This noted. I think that we need to resolve this pretty quickly if we can because this can drag out a long time with DOT.
Yeah, we've presented this plan to the DOT. And initially, their initial reaction on this is that the proposed widening and lengths of queue that are being contemplated here will address the contemplated traffic impacts for this project.
Just like they did such a great job with all the new lights down by Hudson Heritage. Seen the traffic down there lately for DOT engineers to look at?
I really focus on the Town of Hyde Park and not so much.
That's your approach to the Town of Hyde Park, sadly, you're coming from the south.
I actually turn around, I take the 9G approach into Hyde Park.
You're smarter than this is.
Anyway, I do want to say, we have had a dialogue with the DOT on this. They've seen this plan. We actually had an in-person meeting for two hours with them, and this has been circulated to them twice for review.
Well, I think, I mean, you know, I think as the process with the DOT like proceeds, I would like recommend that someone from the Town of Hyde Park or several people from the Town of Hyde Park be involved in some meetings, you know, with them so that we can hear what they're, what they're like saying at the table and express any concerns on the town's behalf. Because, you know, I don't know how to go say this, but I'm not sure that, you know, the DOT looks out for the town's best interest. So, but again, hey, look, this is just some stuff that we're going to have to work through. So it's just.
I like your idea, Pete.
Nobody said it was going to be all like Rosie, but we'll get there.
I think, I think if we do that, then we can make sure that the DOT, because if they're not remembering what Bellfield was.
Well, I mean, Tom, I think, Tom, you were, I mean, you did, you did the traffic study.
That's right. That's why there was only very little work that had to be done at this intersection for Bellfield and had to do with the right-turn movement.
Well, and, you know, the county obviously is going to be heavily like involved in this like too. So let's, I mean, we're not going to forget, and I know that you're not, but, you know, the county, county's going to be pretty heavily like involved in this with, you know, the St. Andrews Lake.
Correct.
So anyways.
Right. And then so.
So you're popular tonight, Tom, so far.
And then narrowed down back to just the two lanes here. Southbound, again.
That's a mess.
However, there used to be a second through lane there. Now the pavement is out there. It would not have to be any widening. It's just going to have to be restriped. They did some restriping to prevent people from going through. They're not supposed to, but they may anyway. Last thing I do want to point out is the pedestrian accommodations on every leg of the intersection, every approach. So we would have pedestrian push buttons and signals, crosswalks to get all the way across. And you see, you know, it's just a concept. We have the sidewalks here in every corner and the connection into what Saki was being built. We show a little connection here into this parking lot. DOT made a comment. Is it possible to have this connection into the parking lot in case somebody does not want to walk along the shoulder on Route 9? So we just showed a connection there as well. So that's basically what we envision or recommend the intersection to look like. And again, has been submitted to DOT and under review.
So DOT finally gets its four-corner improvement. We didn't make the Saki, we didn't make the Saki Brewery do that. Okay.
But to Pete's suggestion, they definitely wanted you to come back.
Remember, I fully confessed to everybody, including the supervisor and TAD, et cetera, what I did that time at that meeting, so.
So that's all I have on traffic. I'll head over unless you have any questions you want me to address.
Probably not right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's the extent of our presentation. Thank you for listening.
It was very in-depth.
Yeah.
So before I go to our consultants, let me just start with a couple of things. Probably most importantly, number one, if you're still experimenting with design and architecture, you need to get it finished. Because we can't approve something that's not a done deal. No, no. At a project near here on the other side, behind the Saki Brewery, where every three months we had entirely new plans based on, oh, it's market conditions, market this. It was two years of changing plans, and I can't approve anything that's not solid and definite. So we just want to make sure that we state that out at the record. Number two, before we go on, we batted around a lot of acronyms. And for anyone in the audience that includes on television, LEED is a determination that we don't see very much around here. It's really amazing that you're committing to Silver LEED. I know that to go from silver up to the highest to platinum, it's, you've got to like use, your toilet paper has to be always reused paper or small stuff. Silver's plenty, in other words. Yeah, it's amazing. But I also know you have to hire someone, a consultant, to actually observe this. You can do it, but still, there's an extra charge to it, I would imagine. Maybe not? Oh, good. Okay, great. But this is a big thing for us. This town is also home to the only, as far as we know, LEED-certified platinum retrofitted building. That's where the National, the State Park Service is, and Statsburg is a former elementary school. So this is a big thing, at least to setting up here. I'm really, in other words, proud. Also, this is a great, huge project for the town. If we didn't say that early enough, I want to. But I'll also here point out that normally we would take a dim view of you selecting the applicant, the sensor point, receiver points to see where visual impact analysis should be done. That's usually us because we're the lead agency. However, in this case, when I saw, it's the same ones we use for the other hotels. So I don't see any reason. But I just want to put the point, make that point out here because I used to also, for the first, I think, seven years up here, remind people, you don't do the part two either of the EAF. We do. We're lead agency. I understand why you'd want to do it and submit it for us, but no, we can do our thinking on our own. So at any rate, that's, those are my little scolding things. Otherwise, you'll hear heaps of praise throughout. Ms. Franzen, do you want to start?
So, you know, just some general comments to begin with in what we're looking at, especially from a seeker perspective, and this does tie into what Michael was just talking about in general for the visual analysis. We'd like to see the date of the photos, the time, the camera that was used, more data with regard to how they were prepared. The other thing is that back then, the selection of the vantage points, it appears from what was presented that what was being evaluated was the single hotel. And here, the disturbance area is much broader, including having residential dwellings closer to Route 9. So they're also, in looking at the conclusions of, you know, you can or can't see balloons, what we're really not addressing is the fact that you're grading not only for the hotel, but now we've added duplexes and villas in front of those toward the river. And in looking at the grading plans, I'm not sure that they in fact show all the grading that's occurring and whether it, and how close it's getting to the river. So I don't know at this point that I would conclude that it's not going to be visible or more visible than shown. And I think we need more information as far as ensuring that the visual analysis is reasonable. In general, Photoshop, in terms of a tool of simulating the hotel, I don't know that that's going to be very scalable. Usually I see CAD and 3DS Max. So I'd want to know a little bit more about how that was scaled into a photo. And again, are we showing all grading? And then as a general question to the planning board, because of the fact you have the villas and other structures closer up to Route 9, would you like to see at least some cross-sections or some other information to be added to talk about what might be visible from Route 9? Just a general question with Coco's, I think that's owned by CIA right now, the property? And will they continue to own it or is there a proposal for the ownership to change?
They'll continue to own it as part of, probably the ground lease.
Okay. In terms of the ecological assessments, I'm glad I heard that it sounded like you had gone out and done field surveys because the first thing that's said in the natural heritage program letters is that these are what we know is in the area. And because we haven't field surveyed your property, we don't know all the species that are present. So we like to see more than just, you looked at threatened and endangered species that were on the NHP list, you know, that you actually walked the site. You looked at isolated wetlands, you know, what was present and actually identify what's present on the site in terms of ecological species to know that a reasonable field investigation was done. I think it would be useful to make it clear as far as what area ultimately is being dedicated to this use. Because I think I heard 73.3 acres, and I know they were, you know, different things. And then there was like a 23 or so lease area.
Yeah, I'll clarify, we'll clarify that. It's, there's a, there's a ground leased area, which is the project. And there's adjacent areas where you have some of the utilities and roadwork that are outside the ground lease, but will have easements too. But I wouldn't say that we have control over the entire 73-acre property and that that's the project. So we'll clarify that. It's a good point.
And the reason I say that is that, so if it's 73 acres and we're showing a certain area of the site, when CIA comes back to do something.
Exactly.
Are we all going to say, oh, wait a minute, wasn't this your project site? So I think we need to know what are the limits of this project and what's not going to change after. Thank you. I have other comments, but those are just, you know, I really want to hit on the visual and ecological and then make sure we know what the project site is going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Those were great comments. Mr. Zataro?
Sure. Same thing. I'll just mention a couple, you know, highlights. We're still looking at the plans. We have to go through, you know, the SWIP, and I know the plans are in their early, you know, phases. But so, you know, in your presentation, again, I think this is a wonderful like project, you know, it's going to be like beautiful. But, you know, and I didn't look at the landscape plan because it's not really something that I'm like involved with. But I know there was a lot of, you know, like discussion about fitting it into, you know, the natural landscape and all that kind of stuff. But, I mean, we need to be like frank. The area of like the villas is, for the most part, is going to be clear-cut. I mean, are there any, are there any trees that are going to be saved? Are there like significant trees? I know the planning board will do a walk. But I mean, are there any like species out there that should be looked at to be saved? You know, I'm not looking for an answer right like now, but I just think we need to be like frank that, based upon, you know, the clustering of, you know, the villas and we've all been in construction for, you know, a number of years. Some of us a little bit longer than others. And, you know, that whole area is just going to be clear-cut. So, and so I would assume that your landscape plan is going to be robust to try to make it look.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. I mean, I just called this up. We did, we've done a good existing condition survey of the foliage that's out there now. The replacement of those cut areas is all meant to be, again, just revitalizing what was there before. But I want to point out that the owner of NRI has made it very clear to us that when we do get to the point where we're going to solidify exactly where these villas are, that we do a robust existing survey of those areas. And if there is something there, let's say there's a massive tree or something that we feel like we can work around, we're going to, we're going to take advantage of that.
Well, I wasn't, I mean, but why wouldn't we just do that like now as part of this process?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, we don't want to be changing things. I mean, when you get, when you get, when you get an approved, you know, site plan, that's the approved, you know, site plan. I mean, look, moving a building a little bit here, a little bit there, but, you know.
Yeah, I think what we're showing here is that, yes, we understand as constructors that right now, to accommodate that plan, you're going to, you're going to clear those areas and then you're going to have to, you're going to have to build it back. I'm saying that if, if there's something we see during the process that's different, then we can accommodate that.
Pete, I will.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want to belabor.
I hear your point.
But, you know, you know, so, so just a couple of other things. Chris, I, there's, I know there's, there's only going to be one water tap for this, right, on, you know, nine? Pardon? Okay. Is there any thought about like looping it down and trying to tie it into, you know, the CIA just to, I mean, because if something happens onsite, then for the most part, the whole like place is shut down. Have been any consideration given to being, you're going to build, you know, a pedestrian like bridge anyways? Is there any thought to maybe looping it down, tying into the CIA? Again, that's something for you to think about. It's, you know, your project, it's not, it's not like a requirement by any means. It's just something, you know, to think about.
Yeah, we, in all honesty, it's not something that we've investigated as part of this project.
It's just something for you guys like to think about. With one like water connection, if something happens onsite, then your whole site is shut down. But anyways, just, you know, like think about it. But anyways, just, you know, like, think about it. Again, it's not, it's not any kind of like a requirement. I don't know, let me, so there's, one thing I had noticed on the, some of, you know, the villas had very long, narrow, like, driveways to them from, you know, the access, like, road, and I can't see people on these narrow little drives pulling up with no, I mean, I don't think they're going to back down these long, these long, narrow access drives to get out. Doesn't seem many, you know, like maneuvering, like area on some of the ones that have longer, like, driveways from the access road to the actual, like, dwelling. So maybe that's something you just want to take like a look at. It's, to me, it's going to, you know, be cumbersome to them. But again, it's your, you know, site plan, so. And then, you know, the drainage, you know, we'll have to take a look at. I understand about, you know, being, being, being at the Hudson and no quantity control, and I don't remember, I think we dealt with that on the last hotel project, but one thing we, we're going to have to go look at is, you know, the Marichi Kill and increased drainage to the Marichi Kill, and how does the Marichi Kill get under, you know, the railroad tracks and get out to the Hudson? We've got to make sure that whatever culvert is at the tracks is not going to be, you know, overtaxed by any increase in flow velocity, you know, in, you know, the Marichi Kill itself. So again, that's just something we have to look at, and I don't remember what we did for the hotel.
Yeah, I, I think, I think part of the consideration was, since we're at the closest point downstream, the runoff from this site's going to get to the Marichi Kill quicker than the upstream.
That could be, right, right, right.
When you're looking at it from a time and concentration perspective.
Right. We'll work through that, but it's just-
Yeah, so by the time that peaks, we've already peaked downstream.
Should we be including Amtrak CSX as an involved agency for circulation?
Well, the other thing I was going to say, along those lines, is that, you know, I would assume there's going to be some blasting for foundations, or maybe you're going to just, you know, hammer everything, but with being, being so close to the tracks, I know we dealt with this, I think, on one of the culinary projects, where, you know, the railroad had to get like involved because of blasting, and they had certain like requirements about-
It was for the egg. It was the egg.
Thank you.
That's right.
Like monitoring and all, and I don't remember, again, what we did for, you know, the hotel, but it's something that we have to look at, blasting and, you know, proximity to the tracks and, you know, involvement of, you know, the railroad. I think we're going to want to get, and I know they're tough to deal with, but we're going to have to get some input, you know, from them, you know, in regards to the project, so. So that's all I had, that's all I had at the moment. Again, we'll get into some of the other things, but those are just-
Thank you, Pete.
Some of the highlights.
Ms. Moss, any comments?
Well, anyway, what?
It's on, right?
I think it's on.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. Of course, the signature from the CIA is important. And you did apply for the variance, you did include a variance application form. I'm reviewing that, trying to figure out what the distances are and what's required, and we'll work that out later within a relatively short time. The limits of disturbance, we'll have to look at those again, because there is some grading that's shown outside of the limits of disturbance, might be on different plans, different versions, I don't know. I did not look at the SWIP plans, just, I think it was the ESC plans, and the road grading was outside, so we'll have to look at that. And the phasing, we'll have to figure out the phasing and maximum disturbance in each phase. Something new that's relative for the town, we have Hudson House developed across the other side of the river, and we get an inordinate amount of noise from their weekend activity. It bounces off of the water, and it's very clear and rather noisy. They also have uplighting in a lot of the trees and along the driveway.
You mean the airport, the airport landing?
Yes.
The airport landing.
She can see it from two miles north of us.
It's awful.
So just so, just so you know, this is a back-up property-
So lighting is a concern.
Which was referred to as, there was nothing about, I'm having bands or music or anything else, or even parties. It was supposed to be a liquor distillery that could be used for small weddings.
So we'll show them.
So anyway, I think that noise and nightlights will probably be something to, for the town to consider. And did the sewer main cross the Marichi Kill under that pedestrian bridge?
We're going to connect to the pedestrian bridge this time. Last time, they were boring beneath the Marichi Kill.
That seems like it would go over the bridge.
True.
Thank you, Chad. Ms. Podora?
Just going to reiterate comments, I mean, we've seen iterations of this project earlier. With the three parcels, there will be the need for lots of cross-access easements, parking easements, agreements, potentially an off-premises sign for their monument sign. I'm not sure how we're going to work that out. I didn't hear it mentioned, or I missed it, a restriction in the duration of how long people can stay at these villas. It wasn't in the materials, but that's going to be important to make sure that it's transient and not permanent housing. I also saw a helipad on the plans. It wasn't mentioned tonight, but I just want to make sure that we have a determination that the helipads permitted, and that the helipad's being reviewed as part of the town's secret review. And then, the parking, I just sent a little while ago, some of the old materials from the pavilion, showing that, at the time, the CIA thought it had nine, it was using 90% of the parking capacity, so they'll just have to coordinate to show that, how much is actually available and, and what mitigation there could be. At the time, CIA was proposing to limit the number of parking permits it issued to freshmen. So I'm sure there'll be other things, but those are just the big items for now. Thanks.
Victor, you said they were using 90% of the parking?
I believe so. I sent, I sent it to you, but you have to get, it's from 2012, and digitally, we weren't scanning as much as we should have been back then, so.
Right. That's the problem.
Neither are we.
Yeah. Life's changed.
Yeah.
For the better in this point. Okay, colleagues, let me start to my left, Ms. Weiser.
So you're going to hear this a lot. We're very excited. We think it's a great project, and I for one think it's going in a great direction, especially with the architecture. The, I just have initially a few comments and questions. One was, yes, I didn't see any mention of the helipad in the project narrative. We will have to discuss that. Is the spa and the hotel lobby bar, those for guests only, or do you anticipate other people visiting?
We anticipate other.
Okay.
Us.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Selfish. I saw in villa number one, there was no fence around the pool, so you're going to have to, you've probably heard that already. And then regarding CoCo's, you know, because it's, it is, it's going to be the gateway, it is your first impression of, of what's going to be behind all the great plantings, I would, I would encourage you to better reflect the architecture that's of the hotel villas and the event barn, any of the interior buildings. It really looks just like you're cladding the old building, and so it would be, be, I think, of your best interest to have it more reflective of some of the interior buildings. I just, I would encourage you to look at that more, and I think that's it for me right now. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Waters?
I'm, I'm still digesting everything, and I'm absorbing it, but, you know, LEED, I'm great, that's, that's great. That's excellent. It's excellent program, so that's, that tells me that there's quality behind this, so. The sustainability of the structures, I thought, because you said that you wanted to, somewhere I heard that it was supposed to be like a destination, something to draw people actually wanting to come there, and I, I liked the living roofs. I was wondering if there's a way to incorporate that a little bit more, maybe into the villas or something like that. Actually, maybe even burm, burming those villas into the ground to make them more energy-efficient, you know, with heat and cooling. That would also raise you probably to maybe platinum in the LEED. But, but that type of a thing, just to carry, to carry that over a little bit more with that. And then, you know, everything that you discussed here is all the things I highlighted, so with the parking, with the stuff, so, so no, no need to go over that again, and my colleagues have hit the other points, so.
With regards to the vegetative roots, one thing we want to share with you, we did mention we're going to have cisterns, but we didn't mention the size. The intent is we're trying to capture 15,000 gallons of roof runoff for irrigation on-site through the main resort for this project.
Okay, so, so, yeah, I mean, that's part of LEED, you know, that's part of one of the requirements, so, yeah, I, what efficiency and stuff, so, I understand it. So that, that's all. I was just trying to see how you can incorporate some of those great features that you have going on, and just incorporate them into the other parts of the project. And then, my colleague, Ann Weiser here, was talking about the CoCo's building. Is that going to be, you know, that, that, that's kind of like in that gray area, is that a temporary structure for construction, because it's there and it's available? Is equipment going to be held there? Is it going to be screened?
We're, we're continuing to develop that, but it, it will have a, it will have a, a finite duration at the beginning, and then we, during that period, will be talking with the CIA and looking at what might be the future use after that, at which time, we'd have to probably come back to you for additional approvals, so.
Okay, but I, I mean, that was going to be just, just cladded for, like, almost like a temporary type of thing, right, or, right now?
Somewhat, yeah, maybe a five, six, seven, you know, year duration, but, but it was the, quite frankly, it was the feedback of the town, do something.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I, I understand it's-
Put that seriously.
But you don't also want to do something and then leave it there and not really achieve what the potential is of that site.
And to the point some of you made, it's the gateway.
Yes, it's, it's-
So I just don't, I don't, at this point, I mean, we'll go back and continue to discuss that, I don't think there was the bandwidth to decide yet what's the permanent future use of it, but that will certainly take place during this, this period, and then we'll come back to you, and things will evolve, and I'm sure, to your point, it's going to be the gateway. So it's going to have to be a-
It'll be, it'll be a LEED type of a structure, probably, on that.
It'll be a, I think, aesthetically pleasing, hopefully, use on a permanent basis, or-
Because it's right at that intersection now that you've created, so it's going to get, be very visible compared to the rest of the project, which is all interior. This is now on the main corridor.
Robert, to answer that other question, there will be no storage of equipment or materials at the CoCo site during construction. We'll even add that note to the plan, but the owner has no-
So you'll have a great office.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just stepping in for a second.
It's meant to be exactly that. It's meant to be an office for meetings of executives, and it's also meant to be a showroom.
Conference, yeah, with clients.
Sales. You know, a lot of, a lot of the work that we do is a lot of pre-work for the sales, not only the hotel room lockups will be incorporated into those, into that structure also.
Material, you'll have a, yeah, material board and stuff.
We're going to build a model, we're going to build model rooms.
Okay.
It's an actual model of-
Of the room, okay.
That's it, that's nice.
So, given that use, shouldn't there be an internal connection? So you're not coming out on a Route 9 with your construction trucks and then heading back in? Just something to think about as you move forward.
Maybe not, maybe not, maybe not in the beginning, but as you build your, build your access road coming in, because I'm sure, you know, the DOT, and this may have even been discussed way back when, but I think that the plan was always to have that, have that building access an internal road and get rid of the curb cuts on 9. So it's less, it's less, you know, driveway-like conflicts, because nobody's coming out of there and making like a left to try to go like north, so it'd be easier to get on your internal road and come out to, you know, the light for that, like, building. And just while we're talking about that building, Chris, I would assume that the health department's going to make you put a, some kind of a sewer connection to your on-site, like, system, because it's just got a subsurface, old, very old septic system now.
It's also not all in the parcel.
Pardon?
If I recall correctly, the septic system actually goes beyond the property line in the back toward the river.
Right. So.
We, we, we haven't had dialogue with the health department about the-
Sanitary sewer?
During the course of construction. Ideally, our intentions were to utilize the existing septic system. The use, as it's intended for construction, will have a lot less impact than what the former restaurant was.
But if they're going to go use it in the future for something, I mean, you might as well, you might as well run, either run a sewer line up there or put in, you know, a pump station that could pump, pump to your on-site sewer main or some, I mean, you might as well set it up for them, like, to use it for something like good, good in the future, because, you know, a subsurface septic is not, I mean, I don't think it's going to work.
Yeah, I think we're going to-
Anyways, just something for you guys to look-
We'll have to take it into consideration and who the potential user may be, whether it's NRI or, or-
Yeah, or somebody else.
That's, that's what I was looking for. You know, what, what is the, what is the use going to be down the, you know, a rough idea, you know?
Just plan for it anyways.
Plan it, you know, a master plan of the-
Okay, well, let it, let us go back and talk. It's, it's a sensitive topic, as we don't own it, we, you know, we're-
I also just need to point out that-
Or a master plan, maybe.
But you're here now, though.
Interesting.
We should just point out that, that remember, if we try to tie their hands now, we have to include this future use is secret, because it's already been brought up, and we can't do impermissible segmentation, so I'm, I'm hoping this conversation can stop right here.
Impermissible speculation.
There you go.
The only thing before the planning board is the temporary construction use.
Right.
But it's not really temporary, it's a few years, several years.
Yeah. It's going to look great.
And, and we'll, we'll study it for the use that we know. Any future use is still speculative.
Of course.
We understand, we understand the sentiments you're giving. Let us go back and try to balance these two issues.
That's why I raised it, because I know you could both come together and do something wonderful.
We couldn't even get their signature on time, so. We'll wear a guard.
Hey, it can only be up from here, right?
Ms. Wasser?
So, thank you to the whole team. It's such an exciting project and so important for this town, and there's a lot of process and service regulation going on here, but these projects are also so much fun, and it's exciting to envision it and think about executing it, so I really appreciate all the work you've put in just to submit these initial plans. I appreciate it, and looking forward to the process. Had a few just short questions, just cur, what was the occupancy of the barn, the maximum occupancy? I'm trying to envision how many people we're talking about in this event barn that might be in there, while you're looking for that. I don't, I don't remember seeing anything on it, the square footage, but I, I-
I know the square footage, but I'm not sure.
So do I, but-
Looking at the RPTX to tell them.
There's a Delta, there's a 180-seat event barn.
180-seat, thank you. Have you met with DEC? Have you, have you met with DEC at all with your ideas?
Delta has had some initial dialogue, as it related to our pedestrian crossing-
That's it.
And the enclosure within the Marichi Kill.
Okay, it's, okay. Yeah, we may not be your biggest challenger, I don't know, but that sidewalk, I'd be interested, right? We definitely have a nice, long sidewalk there.
I'm going to conclude that we have to schedule that, because even Ann and I, who walked the site pretty extensively before, we didn't walk anywhere the villas are, because that was not under-
Right.
A subject of discussion at the point, so we need to see what that land looks like as well.
And then, on, really, my concerns are, and they'll be resolved, I know they will be, it's just the question that pops out at me has to do with environmental concerns with silt control and debris control going into these, you know, if you get, if you get your waivers, if we're going to grant those waivers, it's really moving very close to the water, and I'm sure we'll figure it all out, but that's something that, you know, I, I'm looking at, and especially with direct flow into the rivers, which also makes me think about oil separators and catching anything like that, you know, from going in, but I-
If you like oil separators, then you'll love our plan because we incorporated them in there.
I'm not, I'm not an engineer, that's.
Well, you still have to do water quality treatment.
We have that as well.
Yeah, right. So I'm sure we're going to get, that's why I say, I'm sure we're going to get to all this, but that's kind of where the only negative or concern I'm thinking about at this point has to do with all of this discussion on the waivers and the encroachment into these sensitive areas.
We understand it needs to be a robust plan.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'm very excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Vice Chair Dexter?
Thank you, I just echo our thanks. That's, it is a lot of work. And as I'm listening to, you know, all the different, we talked about the landscaping and the architecture and the constrained site. And there's a lot of moving parts here, and so I'm very thankful that we have really good consultants and a really good board here because I think together we'll be able to see everything through. I usually let everybody else, you know, make comments on the architecture, but I think you really did go to the right direction. It's my, I'm a longtime Hart Parker and my aunt and uncle built a mid-century modern nestled into a very weird site, lots of rock and stuff, and they just, they worked with the site. So it's up on stilts, it's perched up on rocks. So I really get that concept. I think you have to do that around here. My biggest concern, I'll be really honest, I work down at Marist College. I drive home on Route 9 every night and the traffic, it's making me consider early retirement because I, it's just so unsafe down there. And it's like, I really want the town to be able to have a voice because I think, I'm not sure what the intensity is to this site, you know, except for maybe special events. So I'd be interesting, interested to see what the traffic numbers are that you're projecting because I'm not sure there needs to be a whole lot of stuff. I mean, what you just discussed, we've already kind of gone down that road. And since we discussed extending the two lanes up, we have a very popular Dunkin' Donuts. And I, that, it just wouldn't go, that whole thing just wouldn't work.
It'd be a mess.
Would not work because people will run you over as they try to get their coffee at 5:00 at night. It's amazing. So that is really my biggest concern, is the toll traffic. How do we deal with this? So, because there's going to be a lot of stuff going on in there and across the street to the east. So that's basically, I feel like we can work through everything else. So, thank you.
Vice Chair Oliver?
I will also echo my colleagues' comments, and I do think this is a very unique site. And I like how you're using the terrain and topography to, you know, kind of hide things and elevate things and make it all fit within the site. My comments are mostly on some of the granular items, the traffic, I agree with Ann. I think it'd be really great, as Pete had mentioned, some or one planning board member, you know, to sit in with your meetings with DOT. I think that's going to be crucial, especially going back to your traffic study and seeing how it accounts for the Bella Field buildout, certain events in our county, like the Dutchess County Fair, Fair Week, that section is, you know, from here to Reinbeck, virtually, you know, impossible. And then the Saki, what kind of crowd is that going to draw in? If they have an event that is mirroring an event going on at CIA, what happens to that? All that new development in that congested area right there? I have a question about the fire truck access. I think you said at one point, in one section near the villas, it would accommodate a 26-foot truck.
We have a 26-foot wide aisle to accommodate a ladder truck around the main resort and the rentable or leasable villas in that location. We also have a 26-foot wide aisle coming in from St. Andrews into where it intersects with the road to the villas.
Okay, so the ladder truck could, in theory, traverse the entire site?
It could traverse the site where there's three stories or more, where the villas, which are two stories. We've got those roads so that it can take a regular fire truck, not necessarily the larger ladder trucks.
The reason I was asking, I mean, it's not my area of specialty. I'm just thinking, like, in an emergency situation, if there are certain sections that the truck can't get through, would it create an issue if they're stuck and there's more, you know, things are going on, a tree fall? You know, who knows what the emergency is going to be? And they get in there and then they get into a spot where they can't get out of? It's just something I was thinking of.
Yeah, I think they, you have a wider access when you're dealing with certain structures that are an elevated height or a square footage, which dictate the ladder trucks. They don't send the ladder truck to all types of emergencies. I would suspect at these particular locations, they're going to have some sort of a 911 address, which is going to dictate the type of emergency vehicle that you do send to this site. So they would send a smaller scale fire truck as opposed to the ladder truck.
Okay. My other point, like I had brought up before, how the parking reflects the enrollment? Maybe if we could see a 10-year average, a 5-year average, and a projected enrollment plan? And lastly, you know, this is pretty important for me, the plan for Coco's. I know that you can't, you know, that you're very constrained by what you can say for the future, but this is the gateway to our community. And I would say, almost 100% of the culinary, including this project, if it goes forward, is really hidden and masked. So this could be a really, really cool opportunity for the culinary to have a focal point building out front in the community for people to, even if, even if it's like an information center, they can come in and learn about which restaurants are on the site or, you know, if there's even a small shop or something there. I think, you know, even though we can't really plan for it right now, I think we should really consider it in our site plan, as Pete said, for a sewer connection or, you know, whatever it is, so we're not constrained down the road once everything else is built, ripping it up to make it, you know, another useful site. Other than that, I think it's going to be a great project and some really cool things going forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So I'm going to try to be brief. I normally would go over, I think, the highlights of what you heard, but I'm tired. Number one, the villas, you said that they were requiring that they must participate in CIA activities? Can you enumerate those somewhere for us? Is that in the materials? Because I'll, my first confession is, is I'm only about halfway through the plans and everything. It was, there's just been a lot going on in other parts of my life, we'll put it that way. Two, I think that to basically make sure that Tad feels comfortable, this is already mentioned earlier, but that we should probably have a copy of what your rental agreements are for how long people can stay if they buy it and how long it has to be back in your rental program or how that's actually operated. We don't need to have numbers of what you're going to charge or anything else. We just need to see the timing, the timing of the duration for.
Okay, those are literally being negotiated as we speak, so you will, you will definitely get them as soon as we have them finalized and consummated, so understood.
We'll also obviously need to see the sewer agreement or the change to the tenancy agreement. And for anybody in the audience who doesn't understand this, when a sewer district is created, if you're not in the district but you need to want to join it, you can apply to become a tenant to it. And there's no obligation for the district to give it, give you the service, but if you do, then it's an illegal agreement. And that's what you're alluding to right there because you're going to have an increase in water usage. Another point that hasn't been made, that I recall when Foz Construction had this site 11 years ago for the hotel, the ladder trucks that Roosevelt Fire Department has are not tall enough to go to the very top floors. They were able to satisfy the fire department, though, by doing extra sprinklering, I think. They, if I'm recalling correctly, there were two things they did. One, there was only going to be one set of stairs up and down to escape in case of fire. They put in two. I think they also sprinkled, sprinkled the very top, like, where you keep HVAC stuff, et cetera. I'm just letting you know, if they don't still have that, they may be requiring some extra mitigative measures. That's pretty much into the weeds. On a broad stroke, I want to echo my colleagues and say it really is a fantastic project. And I want to thank you for investing in our community because I may be 70 by the time that you, I will be 70 by the time that you get it probably up and running. Good God, I'm old. But I will be a client, I promise. I'll be over at the spa. The fact that I don't have to go too far, I don't have to drive into Reinbeck anymore because I'll be old by then and probably not driving is making it a lot better for me and everybody up and around and through here as well. So, but seriously, this will be something that I think will be used by a lot of the community. I think it's important. We danced around the helipad. We'll need to address that at some point in the future, exactly how it's going to operate. If it's. In case you can't tell, none of us are really happy about it. I live on the river and Andre Belash takes his helicopter back and forth and will sometimes, like, do things when I'm at the pool. It feels very strange, like someone's observing you, but that's just a point there. They do it with drones these days, too, when I'm at my pool.
That was an interesting mitigation measure or impact.
And I'm like, what? Do you want to see an old dude in a bathing suit? Go right ahead. My two concerns are seriously parking and traffic. You're asking for a large reduction in what's required by the, not really required by the code. It's important to remember, those are parking guidelines. The board can vary it however we want to. They're not requirements, in other words, it requires some sort of variance. But I want you to be successful. To us, that would be a worst-case scenario. To you, it's your best-case scenario, so you have tons of people there. They're staying there, you have a wedding, you also have some little festival. And I've decided that I'm going to throw a party for, I'm using, I've rented the event barn because I'm going to party for a candidate. In those instances, I want to make sure that there's a way that everyone's parking safely, et cetera. That's really it. I think that, to what Mr. Gaddy said about the reduction in the parking that was surrounding the old hotel, it looked horrible. But I think that this looks a lot better. And I'm not really, there's no objection to me to have a parking deck the way it is, the way you've improved it, too, to have the tennis courts, a little clubhouse, a snack place. If I recall from the narrative, it's not very many tables, it really is a snack bar. But it's something that's nice, it's a nice amenity for the people who are there. Particularly, I'm thinking if you're staying in a villa for two weeks, it'd be nice to go and play tennis every day if you want to or go to your pool, et cetera. And you may find that you have kids watching it, your tennis games, et cetera. So the level of thought that you put into this, in other words, is really great. The other issue I have is I'm worried about traffic. I live here. You guys don't. We have to put up with this, all of us, every day. The lighting that DOT has allowed to go in where Hudson Heritage is, if you haven't seen it, when they're not synced correctly, people will park right in the intersection to get into where Home Depot is because they're not budging because the next light is not synced correctly. And there's way too short a distance to me between those two lights. Now we're having a third light put in down there. You're not adding a light here, but at the same time, that narrowing of the two roads that would go up into Route 9, I see hideous traffic conflicts that Ann just alluded to as well. Again, since we live here, we know that Dunkin' Donuts, the queue spills out on the 9. We didn't think it would, but it does because, as Ann said, it's very popular for, I think, iced tea as well as coffee. But at any rate, I want to make sure that where you would be narrowing in is right where people are taking a left into that area, too, and there's no dedicated left turn lane. So that's going to be, let me just put it this way, we need someone there at the DOT when you're having meetings as well. If that's me or Pete or both of us, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I have some ideas that we can talk about, you know, separately.
Good. But I guess what I'm going to say here is, is that the people at DOT, a lot of them have left. The ones who I thought were really better at this, as I'll put it, trying to be polite. And so I want to make sure that we don't do something that doesn't help the town because their interest really is usually just making sure that the traffic flows.
And the plows can go.
And the plows can go. So I do think that the internal connection to the former Coco's is a wise idea because you don't want to be going outside and then having to take a quick left there, I don't think. If you're going to be coming in, out from the site, I should say. The last item I have is that while it seems as though it's been painted that we said, get rid of the hideous Coco's, I do want to point out that part of it was trying to make sure that you're successful because if you're selling things, et cetera, that's not a very pretty building. It looks like the '70s structure that it is. So part of our request was to make sure that you would have a better idea of bringing in people who wouldn't go, ooh, I don't want to go inside my nice villa with this on the side, so that was part of it as well. I do agree with two of my colleagues, I think, or maybe three. I think that the cladding I can accept because it's temporary, so to speak, even if it's just three years, and it's still better than what's there now. But Chris was right, this hotel, because of where it's going to be located within the site, it is pretty much hidden from the road. And you don't have anything signature sort of saying, this is what this is going to look like, your experience as you enter in. So at some point, I hope you would consider incorporating architectural elements and details that you have throughout the site as proposed over to Coco's as well. And that's really it for me. What are our next steps here? Because this is, this is like a pre-application meeting, basically, just another pre-application meeting. When would you be ready for us to circulate, et cetera? I mean, you're pretty granular in your plans now, but I noticed I heard that there's going to be some changes to the ETR study. You're going to confirm in late June what was seen in early April, et cetera?
Yeah, that was, the ETR study's not going to change, it's the.
I'm sorry, the movement for the animals through the corridors.
Yeah, it's the corridor study as part of the variance application that'll change.
They should be out here, hopefully, before your next meeting. You have, you have some administrative things that you're going to have to do at some point, obviously. I don't need to tell you, it's SEACRA, Intend to be Lead Agency, open up the public hearing.
That's why I was saying, but we usually like to circulate with plans that are fairly final, particularly with Dutchess County Planning.
Have you talked to County Planning yet or met with them on this project?
No, we haven't.
You probably, I mean, look, you guys have been doing this a long time, but they're, they're a very big agency in this and you should schedule a meeting with them to introduce the project and, before they get it, so they know whenever they get it, what it's about.
So let us, let us do this. I mean, there are a couple of things we would like you to do to, once you get the signature, to be able to move administratively. Let us go back and obviously take into consideration the feedback we got, see what changes, if any, we want to make or add or consider or respond at least to. Perhaps maybe next meeting, as long as we have the signature, you can take, start the administrative. We'll come back with responses, modifications, and we can work in parallel. I mean, normal processes, things are going to evolve once, you know, once the process is formally started. I mean, I think we've given you a complete application, maybe there are things that we need to complete.
It's very detailed, I'm telling you.
We'll, we'll, we'll complete, but we'd like that to get circulated. We'll have some of the meetings, but, you know, the DOTs, the, those type of things, we would, we would do during the process. So we'd like to start the administrative process, we'll respond to many of the comments we heard and we'll move, hopefully, in parallel.
But I don't think they've fully, they haven't really submitted yet.
Can you guys speak up so we can hear?
Yeah, so I was just, I was just like saying that, and again, you know, Bonnie can chime in, you know, Victoria, but that we should probably concentrate on the EAF and, you know, making sure that that's, you know, as tight, tight as we can get it, you know, at this point, that, so that we could get to the point of, like, circulating. I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be planned comments that are going to be getting into the weeds, if you will, but are not necessarily related, you know, to SEACRA. So, I mean, unless, you know, Bonnie has any other thoughts, perhaps that should be where we should, you know, be focusing our comments.
Right. I would, I mean, SEACRA is supposed to be started early in the process, but yes, you want to have as much information as possible because you don't want to have to recirculate. So I think the EAF, you know, project narrative, and then, you know, plans, especially that show kind of the area dedicated to the use. And, you know, if there are any major modifications, then we should get those before circulating. But if it's, you know, if it's additional information or tweaks, hopefully, that won't be a high hurdle.
And then, colleagues, when would you like to try to schedule a sidewalk? Sometime soon?
Yes.
In the next two, next three weeks?
It's a good access point.
Would that be possible?
Bella Field, we had the all-terrain view.
We were going to ask, is anything flagged?
We'll have, we'll have things flagged.
Of course it was, and this is.
It's a hard, it's a hard hike.
I'm happy you can't see my black fingernails from weeding because all I do is pull out maple saplings every day. It's everywhere. Tad and I have discussed it, I don't know what, it was a good year for maples, apparently. At any rate, when you can check out the site and get back to us with some dates, then we can circulate them around, see what. Because this will be, all, I'm sure all seven of us will go. We had a four-hour sidewalk for Bella Field that day.
Michael, is there, and I don't, how much of the site is staked? So are there stakes in particular locations to know where the hotel is, where the road is?
They were, right?
Yes.
They were staked.
Were.
Well, the old, the old plan, right?
No, no.
No, new plan.
Some of the villas have been tweaked a little bit, but.
So we, obviously, we'd want some corner stakes before the sidewalk.
I think, I think, we'll get enough, we can comment, we'll get enough. I think, I think we'll, we'll get enough, we can comment, we'll get enough out there that you'll, you'll see and understand it, if you can get to it. It's a, it's a.
We don't object to, like, dirt bikes, et cetera. All-terrain vehicles.
Speak for yourself. There shouldn't be ATVs over there.
Mercedes.
At any rate.
Shot all busted.
Go ahead, you want. So we, we will work on making revisions to the EAF, whatever site plan.
And we'll get you all our comments. It sounds as though the first comments will be on the EAF overall.
Right.
And SEACRA. And SEACRA. So we can get just, so we can get SEACRA started and going, which is.
Chris, one other question. You read a list of involved agencies earlier?
That was our first, uh.
The first, it didn't include the IDA? Is there, does that, do you anticipate needing to include the IDA?
Yeah, we may, we may, yeah.
Why don't you get the big ones?
And the department, I don't think the department of state was on there for the coastal.
We did.
What, it was?
Yeah, that, that one.
Okay.
And you talked about that in the Amtrak.
Your next meeting, Michael, is the seventh?
August, I believe it's August.
July 7th?
Six.
Six?
I mean, July 6th.
For the house ownership and the EAF as well, correct?
It's like a narrative explaining how, the priority of the use.
Wait, we can't hear a peer, so I know no one in the audience can.
Chris was asking for the EAF, what, what, what we needed as far as the use. So we were saying that some kind of narrative explaining that the use is temporary or transient and including the, like, a durational limitation.
Okay.
As well as the helipad.
Yeah. We will just, we will discuss it. Again, as I said before, the, the final details in that will come out when we finalize the additions to the lease, which we are renegotiating now. But we'll certainly try in the EAF to respond to a lot of the comments we've heard tonight, clarifications as well as additions. I know we received Tad's memo as to a number of sheets that might have been missing and other information. We'll, we'll address that. We'll address as many of the comments. And with, within mind, the, the whole precept that we don't want an application, we don't want it to get circulated and then we have material modifications.
That's right. That's always my concern because I hate to recirculate.
So we understand that.
You know, talking about administration, I think, I think we're going to end up, it's too early to circulate the county planning, but because we want to get them involved early, we can send it to them with the expectation they're going to give you preliminary comments and say it's incomplete. Because I think it's way too early to be asking for, like, lighting and detailed landscaping and.
Right.
So we'll just plan on doing two, two circulations to county.
They can contact county planning if they want. Yeah, we can, we can organize.
Just informally.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Ms. Levonway doesn't always like to meet with applicants, I'm just going to let you know.
She does not.
Commissioner Rafferty does, but not any of the reviewers for the towns. So sometimes they'll attend meetings here. If you want to have an offline meeting, they can do that as well. But just for your first one, just call up Owen and see what you can schedule.
And look, we heard you on the DOT. We'll go back, we'll discuss it if we need to do another meeting with the DOT, which it sounds like, of course, you'll be at the table. But to start it, I think, you know, we've got our proposal, we'll make as many of the changes we can now for circulation, with the understanding that we're going to continue discussions with the DOT and see where we go with things like that. Chris, for the project per se is not going to change material. And I didn't hear many comments that really went to that issue.
No. Chris, you were going to say something?
I think it may be advantageous prior to meeting with the DOT, if both you and Pete have some ideas to improve upon what we submitted, maybe we can collaborate before that meeting?
Happy to. Pete, are you around for a bit? Are you around for a bit to meet?
What was that laugh, Ted? That was a laugh in the back there. Am I around for a bit?
Like the next two weeks to maybe meet with Chris to discuss engineers?
They do it with that.
No, what I mean by that is, no, no, no. What I mean by that is Pete was supposed to go to Charlotte and then canceled it.
But I didn't go, so.
So I, I meant, he might have rescheduled it for this in the next two weeks.
I am going, I am going to Maryland, I think, the 27th through July, July 5th. But I could be available.
Next week?
By Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah, next week.
And I'm around, I'm, I'm here.
Except for next Thursday. I'm going to a PGA event in Connecticut, so.
Nice. You've selected sides.
Yeah, yeah, no live.
So if you'll just, if you email and throw out some dates, we can figure it out.
Okay.
And Michael, so you'll let us know when you have, you're going to submit so we can then get you onto a schedule, so we can consider circulating if everything we see? Okay.
So I might as well just go ahead, like, and bring this up. So I mentioned to, you know, our crew here that I think we should, there's a traffic engineering consultant, and I know that Chris is aware of, called Hudson Valley Engineering Associates. They're down in Beacon. They're local, they're local guys, you know, and gals. They're former DOT, DOT folks. I work with them in East Fishville. They're the traffic like consultant for the town. They know everyone at, you know, the DOT. They work with them all the time on, you know, different planning board projects, their own, their own like projects. CPL, we do have, we do have, we do have some traffic engineers, but they're out of Rochester. And, you know, I think we should consider, and I, if you'd like, I can call one of the partners down there and see if they would be interested in, you know, taking this on and reviewing it. But they're local folks. One of the partners used to actually live here in Hyde Park. And so I would feel more comfortable having somebody like them, local engineers who are very good, like, traffic engineers. Chris, Chris's, Chris's team, you know, has worked with them before. Yeah. So. Dave Ellis, Brendan Fitzgerald, they're. So Brendan Fitzgerald is one of the partners who used to live in Hyde Park. So depending on what the board.
We normally use AKRF for traffic, but they're out of Westchester. If you think they're just as good, they're local, and they have connections with DOT.
I would like to try.
No, no, no. If there's connections with DOT, that sounds better.
So if you, if, if the planning board doesn't have a problem with that, I can call one of the partners and see if they'd be interested, because I like to find out first. And then if they say yes, you know, we'd be interested in working with the town, then, then, you know, the planning board, I can get, you know, their resumes and stuff like that. And then you can make, like, a decision. So, but I personally think that's the better way to go because traffic, you know, I mean, we're all, like, cringing at the two lanes merging into one. And, you know, I want to say just, like, quickly, that there, that there was a very wise engineer who used to live in Hyde Park named Jim Spratt, who used to be the Commissioner of Public Works for the county. And way back when, when I, when I started for the town, Jim was, Jim was a guy that I, like, leaned on a lot. And Jim always had an idea when the Bell Field property was still owned by the county for, for the county to build a bypass road through that, through that property to try and, like, divert traffic away from, you know, the center of Hyde Park. And now, like, here we are, some 25 years, you know, like, later, and we have a problem in the center of town with traffic. So it's something that's an issue.
Jim and Margie were my neighbors.
Yeah, I know.
I remember them quite well. But yes.
So anyway.
First, see if they're interested, and then.
Yeah.
Just let us know, because we can always set it up, set that up by motion.
Yeah.
To hire Hudson Valley.
Hudson Valley Engineering Associates.
Engineers and Associates as traffic consultants, so.
I will check with the one, one of the partners tomorrow.
Thank you, Peter. Anything else, gentlemen?
Peter.
And ladies, sorry. Anything else tonight?
Oh, we very much appreciate the time. We'll, we'll work through these issues, obviously.
We are going to work through these issues. This is, project's going to happen. This project's going to happen.
We hope it is.
Thank you.
We will do our best to make sure this happens. How's that?
I'm very familiar with Gensler. They could go for the gold.
Yeah.
Platinum is too hard.
No, it's too hard. Gensler's one of those.
Is it, is it? That's gold.
Is that leaning? Is that leaning?
Perchance.
The next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Quick Stop. We are here tonight to make a secret determination so that they can proceed to the DBA for their variances. So let me first confirm that everyone had a chance to, good night, everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Let me first confirm that everyone had a chance to read Bonnie's Part Two of the EAF and Part Three.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
I sent a note to Robert today saying that, I think 10 years ago, we used to do these at the dais, and then I would discover in a training session, Department of State, I think, now your consultants can do that as long as somebody reads it. And I went, ah, that'll save time. We've switched to doing this, this way ever since, but thank you. Yeah. So if everyone's had a chance, if everyone's had a chance to read it, then, and I, I believe I just signed Part Three, then I believe we have a resolution.
Oh, I do.
And it's Ms. Wasser.
Kendrick, I did, I did have a question. Didn't have, did not have to do with the EAF. It had to do with the resolution. I'm just wondering, because we did not hear from the DEC or DOT, should, I mean, we say to which no other agency has objected, but should we spell it out that we understand that we have not heard from the DEC or the DOT and that we're moving forward?
Uh, we can do that. The objection period was 30 days.
No, I understand that.
Right. So technically, they didn't object within 30 days. I mean, if you, we can, we can certainly call that out.
Because this is kind of happening now on a regular basis.
Yes, it is, right.
I'm just wondering if maybe our template that we're using should, like, mention it and just say very clearly, not that no other agency has objected, we just haven't heard from them.
No other agency has responded, you want to change it?
Responded or objected. Right, just to mention responded within the, with, within the required 30-day requirement or something like that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that this doesn't accurately portray that, we don't know if they've objected.
That's a good point.
Well, we know they didn't object because they legally did not object. So not objecting is a term of art, and I want to keep that, but we can certainly add something that, you know, whereas.
I like to say, no other agency has objected or responded.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right? I mean, it's very simple.
To which no other agency has objected or responded.
Nor, nor responded, yeah.
Nor responded.
And the law is, yes, thank you.
Yeah. That's a good point because it is happening.
And, well, some, I mean, didn't some agencies respond? I mean, call it up.
Yeah, a couple did.
But, I mean, yeah, but if you just say with no, to which no other agency has objected or responded, then, because they still could object.
Mm-mm. They, they legally cannot object.
When they go to pull a permit, they might object.
Well, they can't, the objection was to the lead agency request.
And it's too late for that.
So they legally can't object to lead agency.
Right, they can make.
But they can make comments.
Yep.
So maybe you should just say within the 30-day lapse, whatever you want to call it, requirement.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to.
Okay.
Be a little more clear.
That's very good.
So no other agency has objected nor responded within the 30-day timeframe?
Right. Not all agency has objected. I think we want a sec, okay, hold on, hold on. This is where I miss being on Zoom because I couldn't.
While, while Victoria works that out, let's go ahead and move over to Jeff and Mary Ann Lewis. The next item is a site plan waiver for roof-mounted photovoltaic panels. This is located at Eight Watson Place. It's not visible from the river. We have the recommendation from Ms. Moss to waive. Anybody have any questions or objections?
Nope.
Then this is Ms. Wisers to introduce.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Jeffrey Lewis, Eight Watson Place, 604-08-913873, site plan waiver, June 15th, 2022, resolution number 2022-23. Whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Jeffrey Lewis to install roof-mounted photovoltaic panels on the existing single-family home and whereas, whereas, whereas. Therefore be it resolved, the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for proposed changes as described in the waiver for, for a waiver of site plan received by the planning board, planning department on June 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And that was the last item on the agenda, except for this resolution.
Okay, so what, what I'm doing, Anne, is I'm leaving, I'm leaving the lead agency paragraph alone because that's a, a legal thing, but then adding a paragraph after it that says, whereas the planning board did not receive any comments from the Department of Environmental Conservation or the Department of Transportation despite a request from the planning board.
Okay.
So it's clear that we sent it out. They didn't send us any comments.
Thank you.
And so we're acting without it.
Can you print that out, Cynthia?
Well, we can, I mean, we can vote as amended as I just read it, and I'll send it to her.
Okay.
She'll get the final copy tomorrow.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Stephanie can introduce everything else.
Yep.
Exactly. I don't have to read that whereas.
Right.
Okay, are we good? Okay. Resolution adopting a secret determination of significance, negative declaration, Hyde Park Quick Stop, June 15th, 2022, resolution 2022-10A. Whereas, oh, it's not bolded. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, and now make it a motion to adjourn for the night.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks Supervisor Torjiani for providing the equipment to display this to the public as well as our wonderful videographer, Charlie downstairs.
Thank you.